All right, let's call to order the work session for the Board of Supervisors. We're meeting in the Supervisory Room in Melody Lane, ARS 38431.02H. The public will have physical access to the meeting room 15 minutes prior to the start of the meeting. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion. Members of the Board may attend in person or via Teams. Members of the public may also attend via Teams or the mobile app. Work sessions are a time for county staff to inform and discuss agenda items with the Board of Supervisors, and public comments will not be taken. We'll begin with a roll call. Mr. Bosby, District Two?
Gilmis is here.
And District Three, Antonis, all supervisors are present and in person. Today, our topic of discussion will be the Development Services Budget. We will go to Ms. Gilman to kick it off.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So today we have our interim Director of Development Services, Christine McLaughlin here. She took over this position just a few weeks ago, stepping in after Dan Coxworth left. Dan did prepare the budget, but she's
Tuned it up?
Tuned it up and ready and briefed and ready to give the Board as much information as
Before we start on that, what's the story on?
On that recruitment?
Yeah, putting out the
So that recruitment is currently open or has been closed, we're in the process of interviews.
All right. All right, now we can, out of curiosity, sir. Proceeds all yours.
Thank you. Well, good morning. This is the work session for Development Services. We're one of three departments classified under Community Development within the county. We also assist in facility management, economic development, and real estate. The Board may recall our role in the sale of Old City High, Miracle Valley. We have also served as the airport sponsor for Cochise Airport and BDI. One of my staff is the onsite manager for BDI. Our customers are both internal and external. Our department is very dedicated to the community's quality of life by ensuring the county is the ideal place to live, work, and visit. We're equally committed to fiscal prudence, operational efficiency, and promoting responsible growth countywide. I'll start by quickly explaining the department organization before moving into first revenue, then expenses, then grants. And I'll end with an overview on how the department is funded and all the key takeaways. Development Services encompasses three divisions, 12 and 1/2 full-time employees. We have no admin, NESA is a shared resource. I'm currently serving as the interim Director and Planning Manager. We frequently compare ourselves to counties with similar population levels in Arizona, like Yuma, Yabapai, Coconino County. Coconino's Development Service Department has 40 employees.
And so you have how many?
12 and 1/2.
What's your population?
140,000 compared to 125,000. So it's comparable. So how we are funded? As I mentioned before, I have broken out grants and we'll discuss some in a moment. For now, I'll focus on exchange transactions, which are where the payer receives a direct benefit in return for services. Approximately 86.5% or a little over $1 million came from permit and inspection fees last year. Although significantly less, the next highest source of revenue came from planning and building intergovernment agreement fees. AmeriCopa Association of Government provides a similar service. This is a unique offering to Cochise County, though. We have several small cities in the county, and we provide planning, building assistance on an hourly basis, which tends to save the city's lot of money, gives us workload variety, and it helps with development coordination countywide. Revenue for this past year was $1,158,283. Again, this does not include grants. Here are expenses, salary, wages, and benefits equated to about 1.2 million. As I mentioned before, our population, based on a population of 125,000 people, the number of employees for this department would typically be around 10 to 50 people. We are definitely on the low end. Over the past year, we processed several grants. The first two are housing grants. Both are administered by the Arizona Department of Housing. For these, the Council of Governments, or CEGO, in our case, develops a method of distribution to determine fund distribution within its region. Within CEGO's jurisdiction, CDVG funds are allocated based on a rotation system among subregions pursuant to this mod. The system ensures that each subregion receives funding in a structured sequence over specified fiscal years. In summary, while both CDVG and SHIFT aim to support housing community development, CDVG offers broader flexibility for various community projects, and SHIFT is specifically targeted towards developing and maintaining transitional and emergency housing facilities in Arizona. We also receive the Federal Highways Administration grants for the installation of EV chargers countywide. Installing EV chargers at county facilities is a smart, forward-looking move that strengthens rural economic resilience, ensures our communities don't get left behind. These chargers are located in Bisbee, Wilcox, and Sierra Vista. As more drivers shift to electric vehicles, having chargers at county buildings keeps dollars local, boosts visitors' traffic, and future proves our infrastructure. It's also about giving rural areas a fair shot, same opportunities, jobs, market access. Urban areas already enjoy. In a way, it's similar to our broadband effort. By leading with infrastructure, we stay competitive as a county. We create jobs, we support freedom of choice in transportation. The transfer to BDI was a tractor and mower, more facilities related. But again, we are the airport sponsor. And finally, brownfields. A brownfield is a site that has remained unused or undeveloped due to real or perceived environmental contamination. It's often a site of previous industrial use. In Cochise County, the EPA Brownfield Program has been instrumental in supporting local redevelopment efforts. Since 2019, the county has secured multiple grants, including two brownfield assessment grants and a brownfield revolving loan grant totaling $2.1 million.
How many do we have?
There were, well, we started with a $600,000 assessment brownfield grant.
Now, how many brownfields do we have? How many sites do we have?
They're incrementally evaluated through the assessment grants. We have a nomination form that people can go to and apply for the grant.
Is it like mostly gas stations that have leaked or what?
It could be, but it's real or perceived threats. So really, you know, there could be many, many. We haven't, you know, we're at no, there's just more than any grant could actually fund because of mining activities, because of industrial developments, you know, within the whole county. Railroads, all that kind of stuff could be considered, or brownfields.
So the grant money is just to go find them?
That's the assessment grant. The revolving loan can be used to actually clean them up.
Okay.
So there was land that you had possibly for a hospital, but there might be some contempt. You could get it assessed?
Yes.
To that, and then if there was any kind of like railroad or something like that, you could get it cleaned up?
Correct. So some fun facts. Every dollar spent on brownfield cleanup, there's an estimated return of $20 in economic investment. Property values within 1.3 miles of a cleanup brownfield increased by 5 to 15%. We saw two to seven times more jobs per dollar invested compared to other infrastructure improvements. Dollar for a dollar, this is a great way. Bipartisan support is for the brownfield programs. In this time of economic uncertainty, the EPA has no fear about this program because
I've talked to Ms. Bronson, working in the Department of Supervisors. Oh, so I've talked to her a few times about hunting down grants for non-owner occupied rehabilitation. So do you foresee any of that in the horizon? Like people that are squatting in mobile homes, stuff like that? And how they either get rid of them, rehab their property, so other people can move in instead? That's kind of what I would like to see.
We will look into all possible programs. The one we have right now, probably with the most funding, is the Home Fund, which wouldn't include that sort of thing. But any sort of funding we can find to help our population, and also how we allocate funds. Currently, we're doing a lot of programs that could improve living conditions, like fixing up bathrooms and roofs and HVAC systems. We could dedicate that towards infrastructure, you know, parks.
This issue was about a community well that serves several people, and one part of that group of people was not maintaining their part of the community well. So water was going everywhere and their pump was running too long, so it's a big mess. And Ms. Bronson was very helpful, as helpful as she could be. But she had, so far, nobody has come up with anything for non-owner occupied rehab, get people out, get different people. And I think I must have gone around this with, oh, I know, with Ms. Traywick and Dan Coxworth, about somebody else coming in and paying somebody's taxes to keep it from getting auctioned. And I don't know what we can do about it. You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, I do.
So that's a problem with, it's actually in your area, Argus and the coastal areas of the state.
Was that specific example in a colonial with the well issue?
No, Argus and Dakota, I wouldn't call that, that's just Palominas. How far is it? It's, well, it's north of Ramsey, no, it's north of Hurford Road and east of Molsin. Dakota and, so Dakota, Argus, H-A-R-G-I-S. It's a blight, you know.
Okay. A lot of issues in that area, too. So, I mean, we can look, for specific examples, we can look first if it's in a colonial. Secondly, if it's in a CDVG eligible area, and then see what kind of programs would be available, if there's any examples where they've used it for something like that.
Yeah, there's been, let's see, and again, this has to do with the treasurer, not you. It was a matter of somebody coming in, they're, can, can a dead person own property? Apparently, yes. Because somebody can come along and pay the taxes for that person and keep it from going to auction. How bizarre.
Yeah. Yeah. Wow. And people just out of the kindness of their heart pay the property tax?
Well, if they're squatter, whoever, you know, relatives can keep living there, I guess, but I don't know. Just making that part up.
Yeah. So you're talking about, so the treasurer should make sure it's the property owner paying for the
Well, it's legal. I mean, we've gone around whether, if there's no law, it's me coming in and paying your taxes for you. But I won't. But, no, I just said, that's what people do, you know.
Well, they're just looking for a check, yeah.
Then we should do something.
Gotcha. You know what? If there is a grant, we'll look for it, we'll find it. In the past, we pursued the $600,000 assessment grant, that was in 2019. The latest one was a $500,000 assessment grant. This year, we could pursue a $1 million assessment grant, which I intend to do.
So currently, with the SHIFT program, was that electric vehicles, SHIFT?
That's housing.
Say again?
That's housing.
Housing.
CDVG, is that?
You know, the federal highway
Federal highways.
One, purple one.
Okay, Pete, okay. How many people have been using those?
The chargers?
Yeah.
They just, they just put them in, yeah.
They're cutting a ribbon today or tomorrow?
Just getting it scheduled.
Oh, getting it scheduled.
Yes, so we're going to have one in each of the supervisory districts. Yours is first. We have one here.
Yeah.
In Melody Lane, over, yeah, by the Arcane Building. Wilcox, we got him at City Hall across from Main Street in Sierra Vista. We'll have him on our Colonial Day Salute.
Buttigieg's $9 billion charging station program. That could have went to paving roads, instead it went to putting in electric vehicle chargers, who don't pay VLT and the gas tax, by the way. Just so everybody knows, that those, no, they don't pay gas tax, they're electric. So the HERF revenue and the federal highway dollars that comes from the gas tax is paying billions of dollars to put in charging stations for people that don't pay taxes. Again, subsidizing stupid, here we go again, so.
No, I mean, I'd be in favor of anything, any freedom of choice that you're talking about that is about market economics.
That's right.
Talking about a subsidy.
Yeah, and the one we have going in Sierra Vista is right next to the hospital, as well as serving the big county facility.
I have a lot of those people in Sierra Vista.
Oh, we got, we got, there's solar panels by the library and charging stations.
Yeah, and the cities, the cities really, really like them, they really want them, because they, especially like Wilcox, it's right off the highway, you know? And so it gets people going along the street.
They don't pay
No, they pay, they pay, they run their credit card through it.
And the county getting, that goes to?
Do we get sales tax, we get, right?
Well, we get the charge for the electricity. It's so much per kilowatt hour.
Yeah, that's, so, not solar.
It isn't, unfortunately.
It's coal, it's coal, because it's coming from the Apache plant, probably. All right, so it's coal-powered cars. So, so, how are we getting, how are we getting utility tax off the solar panels?
Not my favorite thing, anyway.
I, I, I'm sorry, were you still going?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay, great, so this is where I bring everything together. Largest contributor, this is overview, how our department's funded. Largest contributor is grants, shortly behind our permit fees. We have an 18% general fund subsidy. Development Services Departments typically rely on the general fund for about 30 to 50% of their total operating budget, while the rest would come from permit fees, development fees, grants, other revenue generating activities. So 18% demonstrates we're not just getting by, we are thriving. This is outstanding.
When you have, you know, grants are never something you can rely on year to year.
You cannot, but especially in the case of the EPA, like the brownfields, I do believe we can easily get it on.
So for colonial, like, you know, bay acres, right? I, it's just got so much junk, and I don't know if Dan was looking at code violations and bay acres, but colonias, just, do they get like a pass or what happens in, they still have to go through and make sure they're not violating codes, right?
Correct.
So, so when you call, do you randomly do that, or does somebody have to like, do I, like, suppose, say, hey, go check it out because it sure looks, it looks like a trash out there? You know, is that how you are generated to go and look at those areas?
Well, generally, countywide, we're on a complaint-driven model. That's countywide. But we do have areas that we do proactively address more often, just because there are more code enforcement violations present, and they're closer to the city, so.
I know, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm talking about, it's pretty bad. Um, just, since, you know, on your way into Douglas, just east of Cochise College, is that huge now? It's pollinating every time I go by, that junkyard, the guy with all those, now, did we give him a permit to have it right there like that?
Okay, so, an update on that. It is a permitted use, it has grown exponentially, and, and you see, he has that small wall?
Yeah.
He is completing it for the entire
To go all the way across?
Yeah, of his parcel boundary, so it will
When is he going to finish that? Well, I mean, everything else keeps on growing and growing.
I know, I believe we just issued the permit for it, so.
He needs a smelter, to melt all that stuff down, turn it into ingots, reduce the size of the
It's huge, I mean, and he can't go anymore, can he?
No, I think he's pretty much
Yeah, because he can't do a vertical, can he?
He cannot, he cannot. Okay, I guess he can get more parcels, but he's, he's pretty much built out.
You remember Dake Road and the junk? Do you remember how much that cost to get rid of all that junk? It was like at least 60 grand. So anything you want to clean up? And that was the guy with the, you know, I don't know.
Can I bid on county projects?
It's conflict of interest situation.
I remember one, there was, there was one, again, when I was in the legislature, I saw a bid that came in for fencing in a lot, I think it was an eight-out lot. It was like $285,000 to put up a fence, and I'm like, dude.
Fence or a concrete?
I could do that, I could go to Lowe's, buy some pipe and concrete, I'll throw the fence up for 100 grand, man. I mean, it was just nuts, some of the costs that go into this stuff. It's crazy, crazy, crazy. Like Pima County was going to do $4 million for animal control, I said, million bucks, I'll do it. I'll make care of all the animal problems in Pima County. Exactly, yeah. So I got, actually, I have another suppressor permit waiting again at the sheriff's office, who's, again, he takes his time on my suppressor permits, but anyways. When do we do ant control? That's part of the sheriff's budget, right? Uh, we missed that one, I should have brought that up. Hey, I just got a couple questions, are you, are you?
No, I'll just, I'll summarize it right here. Again, we're in high-cost recovery mode for this department. Key internal tasks for the year include completing the comp plan update, updating the building code perhaps to the 24, and developing an affordable housing plan. You'll hear about that next week. And that concludes my presentation.
And then as soon as we get through the budget, again, we've got the comp plan set.
Yes.
What does, what does the housing?
It's where you're not burdened more than 30% or cost burdened more than 30%.
Like versus salary, versus income, is that what you're talking?
Yeah. Based on salary. How do you become?
How do you become unburdened?
Well, there's different strategies. The county can provide rent assistance, and that tends to be the segment of the market where there's the most need, rental assistance and high rents, so subsidizing that. You can also develop, help develop affordable housing projects. Right now, we don't have Section 8 housing, and that gets into some of like the housing department sort of things and ways. We can, programs funded like through CDVG, where we help, you know, when emergencies arise, because that's kind of where it starts. Like your air conditioning goes out, you don't have the money to replace it, and then it's just an emergency. And so it really stops people from being able to live and thrive. It's also, I mean, just changing the type of housing, developing more housing in the county, looking at where we can do housing. We have a lot of antiquated subdivisions where the lots are just too small, you know, to do both utilities, the housing, and all that kind of stuff. It's a really big issue, and that's why we have a six-month housing study coming before you guys next week, where we're going to have a consultant look at all the housing that is currently available in the county and come up with some strategies to help improve that and make it more affordable.
All right, I think if affordable means subsidized, that could be a hard sell for me, because we're trying to reduce taxes.
It is, it's tough, because like myself, I'm just looking to rent someplace and I can't find it in my district. It's just, there's, people are building, you know, and I don't know, that's the way you do it. They're, they're all, it's full capacity.
Is it grass green on the golf course or do you have that?
It's green, it's green. Yeah, it's green, it's green, never let a city issue.
I think that's more Stacy question. So she's got on here, 25 grand is the projected budget for revenues for city reimbursement and IGA, but only 6,800 came in? What's up with that? I mean, there's like two months left in the year, shouldn't she be up like at $22,000 in IGA reimbursements?
Yeah, that's actually Yeah, no, that's kind of open, we're on demand sort of thing. So where this revenue comes from is one of the cities, and just about all the cities are within our IGA requesting we either do permit review or
That's paid by the drink, so you only get money when you do something, is that the deal?
Right.
Okay, so.
Yeah, so we're being reimbursed, it's, you know, we don't know, one year it might be 20,000, one year it might be 10,000. It's there, and, you know, we're there to help the cities as needed. And sometimes where we see a spike is in the cases like, if the city loses a building official or a planner, then we'll step in and that'll go up.
So there's three places I see fines and other fines, right? And it's, you know, 2,000, this one's 5,000, and then the actual amount is zero. So you're not fining anybody?
Under, so this is
So there's one, the first one, 350, on page one, we're halfway down, 351, 190, other fines, $2,000 projected, and then zero actual, and then on second page, $5,000. Or, no, another 2,500, I'm sorry, 2,500, and again, it's zero. So that's what I'm trying to, and then miscellaneous revenue, $5,000, and then zero. Where, where, the money's not coming in, that's why I'm, is that because you're not fining? Or it's not being tracked?
It would be up to just code enforcement activities and what is levied by, you know, code enforcement. In this case, no fines were levied.
So, you know, we had the guy come in crying, upset about the zoning decline where we shut
That could have been $500.
Well, his, his, no, 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 that's not a fine, I'm talking about, during the meeting, we saw that he had multiple RVs, he was camping on the property, and he admitted it right there, where he said he comes down from Canada and parks his RVs there for like three, four months, and then what was the other, what's the other challenge?
PD, the trainer was there too on the
Yeah, so, so he admitted that, yeah, it's a code violation, that he didn't have the permit, but he wasn't fined for it, he'd been doing it for months and months and months. You know, and then down, at the end of Oketillo Road, the guy was operating a legal guest ranch. I know Dan was looking into it, he had the code enforcement guys, I haven't heard what it came about. But, you know, the guy had like six campers out there that he was renting out to people, and so there's, what I'm wondering is if we're creating a environment where people think, you know, they can do whatever they want because we're not fining them?
No, what we try to do, what we push people towards is proactively, yeah, remonizing the solution.
Right.
So
I get given them, these people have been doing it for a long time, and they've been ignoring letters from you guys saying, you can't be doing this, you can't be doing, you have to get a permit, or you have to do this, you have to do this, and then they just ignore it, ignore it, ignore it. The neighbors are complaining. To me, I get the emails, right? So there, there's just nothing happening, so that's why I was just wondering, because, you know, if we were fining them, maybe that would, if they hate the behavior.
Got to be able to collect it, and then if they don't, and you take over the land, then win the real estate business for
Yeah, I got it, I got it. I mean, but I'm just saying, it doesn't have to be like a $10,000 fine, I'm talking like a $200 fine, or, you know, something like that. And if the guy wants to surrender his property over 200 bucks, then
Couldn't both forces, yeah.
Two, yeah, just two guys, that's why she's here. I, and that's the other thing I'm wondering, if we can give her a third
Do you want to give me more money?
Yeah, give, give her, well, give her a third, give her a third code enforcement guy, and then step up enforcement to see if we can generate
In the past, there has been three.
It just seems like, you know, one of the big complaints I have is that we're complaint-based, that we don't allow any, you know, people acting about it, so.
Nobody's going to want to be messing with stuff that isn't bothering anybody.
Yeah, but at the same time, I mean, like people say, hey, if I did the right thing, like that one guy came and, remember about the easement, and nobody could see, and then everyone in the two, three blocks was also in violation, but somebody complained about him, he said, hey, if I have to do it, then why doesn't anyone?
Yeah, the guy with the wall, yeah, that was the step back guy, yeah, the sightline blocker. And then he went around in the neighborhood and he said, look at everybody else is doing the same thing, I'm the guy getting, you know, beat up in it. That's, that's what I think.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's like, you know, it should be this, everyone should be
Fair and equal.
Fair and equal.
And then the other thing, before Dan left, we were talking about, I think Tom mentioned it somewhat, in another situation out by me is the Pierce Subsite subdivision issue. One was we were going to look at creating a special zoning area, and then the other one was bundling those and rezoning those small properties so that we could get the treasurer to sell them. And then he said it's a process, and he was trying to explain to me, I didn't quite get the whole
Okay, so this is, a couple, couple different things there. We do have a potential tax amendment going as a work session to our Planning and Zoning Commission on the 14th of May. That's where we're going to go in and look at potential solutions for the zoning issue. And for that, possibly increasing the allowance And, and for that, possibly increasing the allowance in SR174, you know, allowing the accessories to the height of, of the primary, but only within an antiquated subdivision. That's kind of the staff recommendation at this point, but we're going to do a work session with the Planning and Zoning.
Okay.
Come before them to provide a recommendation that'll come for you guys.
But I mean, the bundling of the, the properties, because they're, they're more than 10 years in default.
Right.
So they're technically the property of the state.
So we're looking at those and every.
They're supposed to come back to us.
We do the tax lien sale.
Right.
And so we're, we're targeting a couple areas. We're looking at Douglas, especially the port of entry area. And we have the Cochise College subdivision, that whole big, big area just north of the new port of entry. That's an antiquated subdivision, and then we have the Pierce Sun Sites one. A lot of those have been deeded to the state. So, so looking at the, the parcels in particular that are contiguous and potentially then combining them through the assessors office.
Making these still for higher value.
Yeah, and if we could ideally get up to, you know, four acres or even at least a couple acres, that's big enough to put utilities on. Four acres would make it so you have a few more options and potentially doing an opt-out house, which is pretty popular in the Sunset area in particular.
I don't need to know all the details, but we're talking about classification. RU4 and RU174, is that correct?
SR174.
And, and so when we're looking at a modification to the SR174, would, would we have, would, with an addendum or, I can't remember.
I know, so it would be a zoning tax amendment. And within the presentation.
Would be a special area.
Which you guys will see, I do outline exactly how many properties in Cochise County are SR174. It is very few. You know, over 90% of the property in Cochise County is RU4.
Really?
Versus SR174, maybe 100 parcels, if that.
Which is all the more reason why the people that have it are a little cranky.
Yeah, and SR is our most protective zoning.
Yeah.
And, and the Pierce Sun Site, that's the zoning that was applied to that area. But anyway.
Well, that's another meatwork session we'll, we'll get with you on, but yeah, trying to sell those properties, something that.
And they will have more appeal once they are actually combined. You know, it just, it opens it up. It's more responsible for them as well.
I think that would be, yeah, we just got to make it a very appealing for sale, public sale, so the treasurer can get top dollar for those. And then we get it back on the tax rolls. That's the thing. The thing, the thing, I, I don't care if they sell for a dollar. The thing is that somebody bought it, now they got to pay the taxes on it. That's, that's.
Well, we were trying to do a hospital district when the hospital was leaving. We found that there's so many, do you still have a high occupancy of people who are like, you know, absentee landlords that have a lot of these little parcels, like especially like on 191?
Yes.
So, you know, maybe that's a work session on how do you deal with that? Because that, that must be for, I mean, decades, right?
It's so much. And I mean, really, the tax lien sale is a great opportunity because we are specifically looking at the ones that are owned by the state of Arizona. Graping them together. If we start doing that incrementally and start with areas, especially near the cities where there are utilities and where there's more likely to be interest.
Right.
We'll chip away at it. We'll, we'll, we'll get it.
Yeah, because I, I gather that, you know, if the port of entry goes in, there's going to be a huge.
Right, you know.
We got it, we got it. Yeah, we got it. We're good buying. So, anything else? Thanks for coming in. Appreciate that. We're, we're, you're one of the departments I really want to make sure we're properly.
Yeah.
Funding and, and to generate revenue and, and services at the same time.
Septic tanks.
Yeah, okay. Thanks, thank, and no other questions? All right, the next meeting will be immediately after this to discuss.
Thank you.
Thank.
Options and procurement. All right, so with that, we're adjourned.